Myers, Florida for 50 years developing friendships with players and coaches. Summer visitors to the Mapes House on Malsum Lake included Johnny Pesky, Sam Horn, Dwight Evans, and Joe Morgan. He attended his last game on March 8th in a skybox at JetBlue Park where he was presented with a copy of the 2018 World Series ring. His proudest achievement was the realization of his dream to bring New England collegiate baseball league to good old Park and the organization of the Sanford Mainers NECBL team in 2002. Allen is survived by his wife of 67 years, Polly Mapes of Springvale, daughters Merrily Perkins and husband John of Shapley, Kristy Mapes and husband John Chatborne of Wells, and son Jonathan Mapes and wife Lisa of Springvale. That equates eight grandchildren. Due to the current novel coronavirus situation, a memorial celebration of Allen's remarkable life will be held at a date, time, and place to be announced. Private burial will take place in Riverdale Cemetery in Springvale. Arrangements in this detailed obituary can be found in Black Funeral Home Cremation Services in Sanford. Anybody who would like to contribute on behalf of Allen's memory are welcome to do so to the Sanford-Springville Little League Organization and Sanford YMCA Organization and all those details are online as well. So again, I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to the life and memory of Mr. Allen Mapes. Okay, roll call, Council Hanselman. Council Hanselman? Council Stackpole?
Present.
Council Tuttle?
Present.
Council Lanigan?
Present.
Council Hurley?
I know you're there. Council Hurley?
Present.
W. Mayor Hanslett?
Present.
Hi, my name's Tom Cody, welcome. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his executive assistant, Larissa Ricketts. Minutes 19-859-01, order to approve minutes from the following meetings. The regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, and the emergency council meeting held on Monday, March 30th. Actually, we have to use one at a time, my apologies, because none of those were this last one. All right, so the first one, the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Thanks. We'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
I was absent from the meeting in fact, I'll abstain.
Okay, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslett?
Yes.
I approve as well, that carries six to zero. The next meeting is the emergency city council meeting held on Monday, March 30th. A motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I can second it.
Thank you. Roll call, Council Hanselman?
Abstain.
Were you at the meeting?
I apologize, it was actually the 30th that I missed.
Okay, all right, sorry. Were you at the March 24th meeting?
I was at that meeting, yes.
Okay, can we assume you were good with the minutes?
Yes, I was, thank you.
So we'll adjust the motion, that's five to seven to zero on the first one. Okay, Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslett, I don't believe you were at that meeting?
I was not.
Okay, and so that carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, nothing out of the ordinary, just answering and responding to many, many questions or to a variety of topics associated with the COVID-19 situation. My inbox is full. So doing my best to respond with information as I get it and as I understand it, so reach out, please be patient, I'm doing my best to get back to you. Had good communication with Ann Marie Mistracchio, Representative Ann Marie Mistracchio about a number of issues that really are probably more designed for the state to handle, but communication and response seems pretty solid. That's what I've had, so we're just living in this time. Any subcommittee reports this evening?
Mr. Mayor, zoning did meet, and we discussed the changes to the item that's on the agenda. Just a second here. Way down the bottom, the zoning and land use tables for, to allow commercial and utility scale solar, again, that's on the agenda, so I'll speak to that, as will other members when the time comes.
Thank you, and I did get a note that it looks like Channel 26, if anybody wants to communicate, would possibly be up in a few minutes here, so hopefully the folks who are chimed in at six can hold on there for a few more minutes and maybe we'll get a broadcast going. Okay.
I was just told that it is up.
It is up, okay. Thank you, Sarah, if you're watching.
Yeah, it is up.
Thank you, so, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Council Stackpole, anything else to add on that?
I'm all set.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yep.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none, we'll turn it over to City Manager for the report.
Yes, thank you. So I'm gonna try not to read through this verbatim this evening, but this entire report is on the coronavirus update. Municipal operations continue in all departments, although many of those operations are greatly modified. If you want to bring to everyone's attention, this document will be on the website tomorrow. Anything you see highlighted in blue is a live link, so you can click there and get more information. City Clerks and Treasurer's Office, that's the office that needs the most access by the public, they're still processing as much as they can. You can call their office number at 324-9125. They will take care of as many vehicle registrations as they can, although vehicle registrations and driver's licenses have been delayed for renewal until 30 days after the end of a civil emergency, which will be at least the end of May, if a civil emergency right now is slated to come off April 30th. There will be a delay of an additional 30 days for you to get your vehicle registered and your driver's license renewed. That being said, they are processing emergency. City Clerks and Treasurer's Office, that's the office that needs the most access by the public, they're still processing as much as they can, call their office number 324-9125. They will take care of as many vehicle registrations as they can, although vehicle registrations and driver's licenses have been delayed for 30 days after the end of a civil emergency, which will be at least the end of May, if a civil emergency right now is slated to come off, there will be a delay of an additional 30 days for you to get your vehicle registered and your driver's license renewed. That being said, they are processing emergency. The hours of operations for everybody to view there. The next link where it says City Clerk Q and A, if you click there, you get a live response in there. And these are the actions that the, these are the most sought-after questions and answers as far as vehicle registrations are concerned. I won't go down through that, but all of those resources are listed there, answering as many questions as possible as far as vehicle registration, private sales and such, marriage licenses again, and other vital records that can be conducted through the city office by calling their number as well. There's also information in here directly from the Department of Motor Vehicle, which much to all of our amazement is completely closed. There's nobody left behind, behind the scenes to be processing any of the electronic transactions that could be taking place, so it's completely offline. So they're gonna have an enormous backlog of information to process, stickers to issue. Just take, for example, our own clerk's office, they can only register vehicles until we run out of plate stickers, or re-regis until we run out of stickers, because we can't get any more stickers from the DMV, because they're completely closed. There's information in here from the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, as to how you can renew your hunting license or get a new hunting license online. There's a link in here to allow you to print a copy of your tax bill, if you've lost your copy, you can go on there and get your tax bill from there. Let's see, and there's a link in here that says Local Property Taxes Online. You can call the City Clerk's Office, they can help you with this if you aren't familiar with that, or you can click this link if you're technically savvy, you can go on there and pay your taxes that will be due, and you can do all of that online and use your credit or debit card to do that. Public Safety Departments, police fire and EMS, and Public Works continue operations, but their operations have been modified with procedures making contact, amending contact with the public. The state has established what is called the U-21 Protocol, so evaluating contact, utilizing that as much as possible for public clerks as well as for the dispatch. So please expect that if you call dispatch and are calling for any police, fire, or ambulance, you will likely be asked the U-21 Protocol before anybody responds. And that simply is going to assess how you're feeling, if you've been outside of the country, if you're running the temperature, things of that nature, so that when our units respond to your place of residence or wherever the call is coming in, we at least have that information and they can wear additional PPE equipment, personal protective equipment, if needed. To date, throughout this pandemic, the city's been able to maintain staffing levels at or above 82% overall for the past number of weeks. We were tracking this for three weeks. That simply is going to assess how you're feeling, if you've been outside of the country, if you're running the temperature, things of that nature, so that when our units issue. So that covers the six various elements within the federal legislation that was passed under the Families First Response Act. We have a number of individuals that are out for that, due to lots of childcare, school, and other services, that may have been impacted by exposure, and are quarantined for a number of days until testing comes in. I will say that for our first responders and our public safety staff that have gone, that have had to obtain tests because of the protocols warranted it, Southern Maine Healthcare has done an exceptional job and turned those tests around within a 24-hour period, typically in under 12. When I was discussing with Nate Howell, the CEO of Southern Maine Healthcare yesterday, he indicated that IDEX was doing all of that testing for them, thus the very rapid turnaround. Also, there was the order regarding further restrictions on public contact and movement, schools, vehicle, travel, and vehicle businesses. Governor Mills issued that order last Tuesday on March 31st, what we locally know as the Stay Healthy at Home or the Stay in Place Executive Order. I put information in here, the additional items, additional areas that that stress as far as essential, essential personal activities, which include the following: obtaining necessary supplies for household consumption or use, such as grocery supplies and equipment needed to work from home, laundry and products needed to maintain safety sanitation and essential maintenance of the home and residence. I bring this up because we have received, councilors have, the city office has as well, people frustrated that members of the public are out shopping for what's deemed to be non-essential items for those places and businesses that are still open. Obtaining medication or medical supplies and seeking medical or behavioral help or emergency services, providing care, including transportation of oneself, a family member, friend, pet, or livestock in another household or location for essential health and safety activities and to obtain necessary supplies and services. Traveling to and from an educational institution for purposes of receiving meals or special materials, distance learning. Engaging in outdoor exercise activities such as walking, hiking, running, or biking, but only in compliance with the social gathering restrictions in Executive Order 14 and all applicable social distancing guidance published by the U.S. and Maine Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I have engaged Police Department earlier this week for their observations over the weekend, and continued observations that by and large, people are maintaining the social distancing, but please be advised, Police Department is observing for that, so if you're out and about getting exercise, if you and a family member are together, that's one thing, but if you're meeting in groups within our city parks or other areas, you will be warned, advised, counseled, and dispersed. Travel required by law enforcement officers or court order, and the last item for essential activities is traveling to and from a federal, state, or local government building for a necessary purpose. So again, as previously disclosed, the order as given by the governor on the 31st is enforceable by our Police Department. The Police Department will warn, advise, and disperse any persons observed in violation of the Executive Order. To emphasize the importance of these measures, Police Chief Thomas Conley has issued a public service announcement. You can view that on YouTube by the link attached. Sanford Fire Department also has issued, the Assistant Chief Robert Honer has issued a second public service announcement for the protocol to follow. If you think you have COVID-19 symptoms, please call your primary care provider of Southern Maine Healthcare First for a phone assessment of your symptoms and status. All healthcare providers now are set up to perform telehealth in our triage by phone to advise you on the appropriate level of care and the appropriate facility and location to obtain an assessment should you feel it necessary. If you're advised or warranted, you call 911 for services. Dispatchers again will ask you a series of questions known as the U-21 Protocol, to ensure that first responders are ready to protect both you and themselves with personal protective equipment. You can view that PSA at the YouTube link below. COVID-19 cases and utilization, we track this daily, and we receive information through the Maine Emergency Management and the York County Emergency Management, and our Emergency Management Director Alex Hamerly participates and coordinates this information and pushes it back out to municipal operations, and we track that daily. I put the chart, the chart in here since we've been tracking back on March 13th. It shows the number of COVID cases across all of Maine. The first graph, it then shows the number of COVID cases in York County. The most interesting piece of note is the Maine daily increase. You will note that over the weekend, and even today, we've seen much lower increases as far as the number of cases that are occurring, so there's fewer cases coming in on a daily basis now. We're taking that as a very positive step. I know in watching the national news, other pandemic areas are seeing a similar response. The next graph shows the blue bars as being the overall number of cases in the state of Maine, and the orange is those proportion that are deemed here in York County alone. I did note from several phone calls this week, one with the governor's office, one with Maine Health, that the, there was a lot of concern that out-of-state traffic coming in here, people coming up out of other states, the much higher level of infection than what we're experiencing, coming up to use their vacation homes, their second homes, were contributing significantly and/or not showing up in the data set. From the information that I was able to obtain from Southern Maine Healthcare, they are not seeing an influx of cases, i.e. none, have come into their facilities, that Southern Maine Healthcare has of yet, from someone who is, so to speak, from away. Going on further, we also track the amount of intensive care beds and ventilators that are being utilized and the resources across our state, and we look at those daily utilizations. That's what this next graph is going to show as soon as that pops up on the screen. You can see the major drop-off over the weekend, the number of ICU beds has dropped down to just over 50% free and unoccupied, and that the number of ventilators have stayed below the 50%, flattening and starting to decline. So the local data provided by Southern Maine Healthcare, I wasn't able to put that up on the, in this report, but I can give you a verbal relay of that, that the federal designation from the 15 days to the 30 days to slow the spread, and Governor Mills' Stay in Place Order extended out to April 30th, 2020, is doing its job. Viewing the information provided to us by Southern Maine Healthcare, the peak of the curve for the hospital utilization will occur at or before April 29th. It will taper, it is proposed to taper downward rapidly thereafter. These observations are not based upon the previous national model predictions from March 31st, but on using localized data into that model as a predictive tool. I will note that no model is perfect in timing or magnitude of all these predictions, but it is, however, a strong indicator for planning and response purposes. In summary, all health and emergency management personnel are giving credence to the stay-in-place and social distancing measures currently implemented. So I ask everybody to help everyone by complying with these orders and to keep yourself safe and to keep others safe. These measures are proving, proving to shorten both the severity and the longevity of the pandemic and our responses. Please do your part to help others by being smart, to be safe, and follow these guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions this evening from the council?
I'd like to ask something or mention something.
Sure.
This is Maura. I just wanted to comment, because, you know, it sounds like as you're, as you're talking, and I don't, know you don't mean it this way, the stay-at-place, the stay-at-home order going to April 30th, you know, I don't want to give people the impression that it means that it's gonna be lifted on April 30th, just getting down is like we are, the more we can extend beyond that, especially as the rest of the nation is going through it at the same time, the safer we're gonna keep our population here in Maine and the less likely we're gonna see a resurgence. So I want to make sure people understand, it's, that it's very likely that we're going to be trying to stay in place well past April 30th.
Okay, I would agree. Any other questions from the council? Are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. You're dead air, I feel like I'm a bad comedian up here, all right.
You have to unmute, Tom.
I know. All right, so let's, communications presentations, none, public participation, anyone like to speak publicly in relation to anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close, public participation. Public hearings, the city council will take public comment on the following. 19-808.01, a public hearing to receive comments on the renewal of the city's special amusement permit and application for liquor license renewal with malt spirit, various privileges from Bonnie Bay Country Club LLC, doing business as Country Club LLC, 588 Country Club Road, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. 19-816.01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Main LLC, formerly known as Landris Cannabis Company, for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator licensed at 22 Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 19-857.01, a public hearing on proposed amendment of Chapter 280, zoning regarding membership of Site Plan Review Committee. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Director Della Valley, or someone that's, wanna give a quick briefing on this topic?
Yes, Director Della Valley is on the line.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure. So the Planning Board prepared this recommendation based upon a request from the zoning subcommittee. Currently, there are nine members on the Site Plan Review Committee, including a number of staff people, a representative from the Planning Board, and a representative from the City Council. The recommendation based upon the fact that it's difficult for the council to participate, that, and the fact that the, the committee is basically implementing the policy that is established in the ordinance, there is little room for any kind of policy discussion beyond that, because the rules are already set out. The Planning Board did hold a public hearing, and no one spoke either in favor or opposed to it, and they are recommending that the city council member be removed from the membership list.
Be straightforward, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of this item?
Mayor, when it's appropriate, Bob Stackpole, I just have a few words to say, that's all.
Okay, could it wait till the agenda item?
Sure, absolutely.
I'll make a few quick comments at that time, too, Thomas and Maura.
Yep, absolutely, I'll call on you, make sure everybody gets heard on this topic. Perfect. Anyone else here to speak from the public on behalf or against this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, joint public hearing. 19-855.01, the city council, school committee, and budget committee will take public comment on the following. A public hearing on the proposed municipal and school budgets for fiscal year 2021. So, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so who's delivering this information tonight?
I'm gonna review the slides for the public, Bob Stackpole here, Chairman of the Budget Committee, for those who might not be aware of that.
Council Stackpole, would you mind just letting us, you know, a brief update to how we got to this point, just kind of walk us through the budget process? I know that meetings were canceled the last minute, there was a meeting, I believe, last week to sort of finalize, you know, the presentation this evening. Could you just give us a quick 30 seconds?
Yeah, sure, sure. You know, the, this, the Budget Committee is the combination of city council members and members of the public. I can't remember the dates off the top of my head, but we had at least two, possibly three, public meetings before we got into our social distancing situation that we're in, and made good progress. We listened to presentations by City Manager Buck on the municipal budget, and then followed that up with the presentation from Matt Nelson on the, on the school budget. At the conclusion of the last public televised meeting that we had, we had essentially given the green light to the municipal presentation, the municipal numbers, and we asked the superintendent to go back and provide us with a couple of scenarios for reducing the school budget. I can get into more detail as far as percentages as I go through the slide presentation. At that point, things broke down because we were not able to, to meet publicly as a, as a committee anymore, so we had to meet online. And I understand by some communications I've had today, that, and let me apologize for any confusion, we did meet on March 20th, and there is a transcript of that meeting that's now up on the website. I've heard some discussion that possibly proper notification wasn't given for that meeting. I'm not sure of all that stuff at this point, but there was certainly no, no attempt on the Budget Committee's part to kind of hide in a, in a room and make final recommendations here. It was a good meeting, and it was done via telecommunications, and I will say that, and it's, it should be no secret to any of us, that we have struggled with the technology to have these meetings, and although we've changed to a different platform now, we were still working with the old platform, and I think that lent itself to considerable confusion around that meeting on the 20th. At that meeting on the 20th, we did determine that we were going to pick the scenario for the schools, which lowered the, I'll give you the exact number, but it's approximately $146,000, $46,000, which was their proposal. Again, I have more information on that when we get to that slide detail, and so we chose to go ahead with that reduction, and that's what you're gonna see presented here this evening.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. So I'd say if you want to start the presentation, Council Stackpole, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure, sure. All right, so I just have a couple of preludes to this. Um, all right, so I just have a couple of, uh, preludes, uh, to this that I'd like to, uh, like to point out for everybody. And, uh, keep in mind that, uh, in addition to being a city councillor, I was an educator. So, uh, I do see this as an opportunity, uh, not necessarily to educate the, educate the council or school committee or budget committee members, uh, but the public. Uh, so, uh, I, I do have my little, uh, things that I'd like to, uh, slide in here, uh, which are not political. Uh, first one being that the, the budget that, uh, is being presented here are based on estimates. Uh, they're very close estimates, uh, but some of the numbers may change slightly. Uh, second point being, uh, when I discuss mill rates, I want to be clear that the mill rate is an estimate, uh, again, a very close estimate, uh, and the actual mill rate is set by the assessor. And again, these are not numbers that we, uh, expect to see change significantly, uh, but they may, they may change. Um, and, uh, third, uh, while the city council will likely vote on the combined budget tonight, the school budget will still need to be ratified by a referendum vote, uh, that's typically done in June. Um, given our situation, I don't think anybody knows, uh, exactly when, uh, that vote will take place, but, uh, by state law, that, uh, that does need to, uh, to take, uh, to take place. Uh, fourth, uh, when we, uh, spoke about the bonds that, uh, we were, uh, uh, voting on, the community voted in favor of last year, uh, the city, uh, manager did a, a projected tax rate, uh, based on, uh, what the impact of the bonds. And, uh, I'm happy to say that the projected tax rate, uh, was eleven cents higher than, uh, the, uh, and I'm going to say the, the mill rate, uh, was eleven cents higher than what we're going to be looking at, uh, this evening. Uh, and, uh, lastly, I just want to make the point that no one has a crystal ball. Uh, we can't predict what the economy will look like, uh, next year or in the future, and I think we have to move forward and we have to proceed based on the information that we have. Uh, so with that, we can go to, uh, Slide two. I believe the city manager is running the, the slideshow. Um, I'm going to assume that, uh, certainly city councillors have, uh, looked at these numbers in advance. Um, we all can, uh, do some math, and, uh, we can see this is the combined expense, uh, both school and municipal, uh, and I'm going to abbreviate the numbers, uh, that is eighty-three million dollars, uh, combined CIP, uh, three point five million dollars. And the county tax, uh, is, is an estimate. We don't have the county tax bill yet, uh, but I did speak with the city manager today, and he feels, uh, confident, uh, if I can use those words, that tho- those numbers are a, a fairly firm estimate of what our county taxes will be, and I'll speak more to that as we go through this. So you have your total appropriations, uh, again, just like your home budget, uh, that's how much it costs. Uh, that's how much it would cost to run your household. The eighty-eight million dollars is how much it costs to run the city and schools. Now you subtract out of that the combined revenues, uh, fifty-three point six, uh, million dollars. We did use, uh, as we have always done, uh, fund balance of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, more on that, again, as we go through, uh, which leaves us with a net approsh- appropriation or a difference between what it costs and the money that we have of thirty-three point five, uh, million, uh, or a net change, uh, in the year of one point four six six, one million four hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars. That's an important number. Okay? Uh, and, uh, the next line's down, fiscal twenty. Our current tax rate, to skip a line, uh, is twenty dollars and seventy cents. A hundred thousand dollar house, you're going to pay two thousand seventy dollars in taxes. Uh, and the current mill rate is an increase of fourteen cents, so it would increase the mill rate to twenty dollars and eighty-four cents, which again, your typical hundred thousand dollar house, uh, is, uh, fourteen dollars a year increase. Um, so, uh, that's how all these, uh, the, the overview numbers, uh, shake out. Again, I use the hundred thousand dollar house because it's easy to do the math. Uh, it's easy to multiply the mill rate by a hundred, and then it's easy to take the mill rate, divide it in half, double it, et cetera, et cetera, to get a close estimate of, of what this, uh, increase is going to cost you. Okay? Um, so I'm going to move on to the next slide. Wait for that to come up. Uh, spend less time, uh, on these slides. Uh, this is, uh, uh, broken down by municipal and school. If you look at the, uh, column titles up above, twenty twenty-one municipal, twenty twenty-one school, and then combined, um, and, uh, it, it basically breaks down the numbers on the previous slide in a little bit more detail. Uh, once again, uh, the important number on this page is the number in the lower right-hand corner, one point four six, one million four hundred sixty-six thousand one twenty-two. That's going to come back time and time again as we go through this. All right, so we'll move on to the next slide. Uh, these are some things that the, uh, Budget Committee, um, and I'm not going to say that the Budget Committee did these, uh, changes on their own, even though it says Budget Committee Recommendations. Uh, let me, uh, quick aside, we did take a vote, uh, on both of these, and the Budget Committee is in favor of including these funds as an increase, uh, uh, from the budget. It's all calculated in, so this is not an increase from the numbers that we've been working with. And those two things that, uh, we put back in were three thousand five hundred dollars for Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, as I understand this, this is for free memberships, free one-year memberships for new businesses in Sanford, uh, to, uh, beef up membership in the chamber and try to include these new businesses, uh, in the, uh, processes around town. Uh, we also restored, uh, sixteen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars for the part-time grant writer that was, uh, removed in the, uh, original municipal budget. So that position is back to full funding. This is not necessarily an increase, uh, their, their position is back to, uh, full funding. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next slide. Um, we have the, uh, municipal summary, uh, broken down, um, uh, budgeted amount for nineteen twenty, budgeted amount for twenty twenty-one, and the variance. Uh, you can see, uh, variance is probably where the significant information is on this, uh, where you see operational expenses are up by one point five, uh, million, uh, revenues are up by one point two nine million. Notice, uh, and again, I'll speak a little bit more about this, that our, our increase in revenues does not match our increase in expenses. Uh, and, uh, so that leaves us a, uh, net taxation, two hundred forty-nine thousand, um, and including the, uh, the CIP, and I, there's a, a, a bottom to this slide. Can we, can we see that, Steve? There might be notes, um, on the slide.
That's all of that slide, Bob.
Okay, so maybe it's the, maybe it's the next slide? Does it, does it have, uh?
Uh, the next slide is the School Department Budget Reduction.
Okay, all right, okay. So if you can, if you can go back, Steve. Um, so there, there are some, there are some notes, um, at the bottom, just, just some numbers, um, and, uh, I'm sorry they're not, uh, available, but, uh, it talks about where , uh, significant, um, uh, increases, increases and reductions, uh, come from. Um, and, uh, I, I'm not going to, uh, dig into those too much, uh, but they are things like employment insurance, retirement, um, uh, contract, non, non-contract services, debt service, et cetera, et cetera. But wha- what I did want to point out, um, in, in this is, um, uh, and, uh, I, the, um, CIP numbers, um, CIP, uh, numbers, uh, mandated by Charter is, of course, four percent. And I, and I want to tell all the councillors that, uh, this budget does include, uh, money for parks and recreation this year. That was, uh, not touched, was not even discussed, so, uh, that, that program moves forward. Um, CIP, um, is, uh, um, oh, let's see, I'm losing my place here in, in the notes. The point, the point being that, uh, and these numbers will show up, the point being that CIP is up above the four percent that's, uh, mandated. Uh, so we are putting more money into our, uh, capital improvements plan, uh, than required by the Charter. Uh, and I, I think that's a, a, a good thing. Uh, we're taking care of, uh, properties, uh, and, uh, I wanted to, uh, to point that out. Okay, we're ready to go on to the next slide, uh, which is, um, regarding the schools. And as I said earlier, um, the, uh, the school was asked to, uh, present us with two budget proposals. Uh, first of all, let me back up. Their, their original, the school's original proposal, uh, increased their budget, uh, to five point six eight percent. Okay? Uh, and that's up at the top, it says proposal, no, it says proposal number one on my, uh, slide, but it doesn't say that on yours. Uh, we asked them to come in with two proposals, uh, one to get us to four point six seven percent, which put their budget increase in line with the municipal budget increase. And then we also asked them to come in with a four percent, uh, budget decrease, I should be saying, four point six cent, seven percent decrease and a four percent decrease. The, uh, Budget Committee, after discussion, and this was at the twentieth meeting, um, uh, chose to go with the first proposal, uh, which is what you're seeing in front of you, uh, which lowers the, uh, school budget proposal from five point six eight to four point six seven, about one percent. And, uh, you can see, uh, this was, uh, developed, uh, I'm sure, uh, proposed by the administration superintendent, and then, uh, also run by the school committee and approved by them before it, it came, uh, to us. So, uh, significant, uh, hit to the athletic program, uh, and, um, the, um, other part, uh, is also, uh, the significant, uh, cut is the, the tech integrator position, position at, uh, Sanford High School, among others. Now, their total cut or reduction to get from five point six eight to four six seven, this was a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, approximately, a little bit, well, a hundred forty-nine point five three, three fifty-three. You can see that number at the bottom, uh, and that's, that's, uh, what these, uh, amount of, uh, budget cuts, uh, came to, one forty-nine, five thirty-five. And, uh, uh, stick that, um, aside, uh, keep that in mind, uh, as I go through some more of these numbers. So again, on to the school summary. Similar, uh, to the municipal summary, um, of course you have same thing, you have operations, um, and then, uh, worth noting that, uh, general education, uh, is, is funded, uh, somewhat separately from adult education, so that's why you're going to see, uh, different, different numbers there. So you have your total costs, you have your total revenues, uh, coming in, and then, uh, the difference, uh, net tax from operations. Um, and, uh, their CIP is down, school CIP is down, uh, and, uh, so, uh, once again, total net from taxation, um, the, uh, six hundred ninety-one thousand eight sixty-three number, the lower right-hand corner. Uh, moving on to, uh, consolidated expenses, uh, hopefully you don't find these too repetitive, but a different breakdown of the, uh, of the same, uh, same numbers. See municipal, you see school, um, then you see, uh, consolidated, uh, CIP, uh, and, uh, now, notice this number does exclude county tax, uh, so county tax has not been factored in. However, as I said earlier, uh, city manager feels that, uh, his estimate, that doesn't mean zero was calculated in, it means, uh, going back to, uh, I think that first page, um, that number has been calculated in, but no increase in county tax has been factored in. And that gets us to a, uh, budget variance of four point seven percent. That's combined schools and municipal, four point seven percent. Okay, uh, moving on to revenues. Again, the same type of, uh, breakdown, um, and, um, there's, uh, municipal, uh, revenues and school revenues. Notice that, uh, both of those revenues are up. Okay? And, uh, I'll touch more on that point, uh, in the next slide. Okay, so this is consolidated summary. You can, you can look at these, these numbers, uh, gives you the variance, uh, not too much different from, uh, what we've done before, broke down, uh, breaking down the, the CIP numbers, um, and so on. Now, there's two numbers I want to point out here. Uh, one is that I told you to remember the variance of, uh, one million four hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred twenty-two. Okay? That's, that's what, if you want to, uh, make the comparison to a home budget, um, when you, when you tally up all your expenses, your bills, groceries, uh, all the other stuff, I'm sorry for the, uh, motorcycle noise, I do have my window open because it's a, it's a nice day. Um, good luck to them, uh, hope they have a nice ride. Um, uh, when you tally up all your bills and then you tally up your income, that would be the difference. Okay? So what we've done is we've tallied up what it costs to, to run our, uh, municipal services and our schools, and we come up, uh, with, uh, one point four, one million four hundred sixty-six thousand one twenty-two dollars needed to, uh, maintain this budget. Um, and then, uh, I'm going to ask you to also, um, uh, just, uh, again, remember the thirty-three million five hundred two thousand four hundred twenty-one, uh, dollar figure, we'll address that in a minute. So the, the, the point I'm trying to make here overall, besides reviewing, reviewing these numbers, is that, I, I don't think it should be any secret as we go through this, we're looking at about a, uh, fourteen cent increase in the mill rate. Uh, and I say about because we're dealing with estimates. That, uh, one million four hundred sixty-six thousand, et cetera, represents that fourteen cents. So people who are listening and are saying, first of all, uh, how do we get to zero? How do we get to a zero increase in our mill rate? Okay? We get to a de, uh, zero increase in our mill rate by reducing that one point four or actually pretty close to one and a half million dollar number there. That's how we get close to zero. Now, to, to look at this and say, there should be no increase in taxes, that's what we would have to remove from programs on both the municipal side and the school side in order to, to get to zero. And that's, that is just not something that's feasible. Uh, I'll, I'll use, uh, a hot topic that's, uh, on everybody's mind. Uh, right now, the lower section of the transfer station is closed. People are raising, holy hell, because the lower section of the transfer station is closed. So the question becomes, if we're going to reduce that one point five million number, what services don't we provide? And I, you know, I'm going to sort of leave it at that, uh, because, uh, that's, that's where we're at. We're, we're into cutting services, uh, in order to move ahead, and I'm, I'm not going to get into the details of what that would entail, entail, because it would sound just like it's, uh, scare tactics, and that's not something not something we need to do right now. Looking to the future, and I guess I'm speaking to maybe future Budget Committee members or whatever. First of all, let me say that I think an increase of 14 cents on the mill rate is a pretty stable tax rate. Moving from 270 to 284 is a pretty stable tax rate. We're not talking about 50 cents, or a dollar, or 75 cents on the mill rate, which we have done in the past. So moving 14 cents is pretty stable. But if you really want to get, as a community, the tax rate very stable, and by stable, I'm just pulling a definition out of my hat and saying, let's say it would be less than 5 cents every year. So your tax rate might go up 3 cents, 4 cents, 5, but no more than 5 cents, and we would call that a stable tax rate. What you have to do is you have to look at your revenues that are coming in, because cutting programs is just not accessible, is not just not feasible significantly, certainly not one and a half million dollar worth of programs. What you have to do is you have to look at our revenues, and I'm going to do that in a little bit more detail on the next slide, to work to increase revenues so that in this year and in future years, there isn't that 1.5, or in this case specifically, 1,466,122 gap in what we need to run our community, which is a growing community, and what we have available for revenues, okay? We all need to, again, in your home budget analogy, we need a raise, right? You need to go to the boss and ask for a raise. So who's the boss? Let's go on to the next page. For those of you who are falling asleep, there's only two more pages in this for me to go over. So who's the boss? How do we get more money? And let me shelve that for just a second, and on this tax impact appropriations page, let's first of all look at valuation. And again, as most of us understand, valuation, you know, it's good news, it's bad news, right? So valuations are up, again, these are estimated, but they're fairly firm numbers. Valuations are up, so what does that mean? That means when you go to sell your house, your house is going to be worth more, that's good news. However, it also means that valuations of your house are up. If your house was worth $100,000 last year, it may be worth $105,000 or $107,000 this year, so you're going to pay a little bit more tax, because your valuation's a little bit higher. So keep that in mind as you're looking at your tax bill. Your house is worth more, therefore, you're going to pay more in taxes. Now, let me also qualify that by saying, not everybody's valuation goes up. Some valuations stay the same, some go down, some go up. So that's why we can't put a hard and fast figure or percentage on that. So now, as I talk about, and I guess that's on the next slide, the other thing I want to point out is just that, once again, that the county tax is figured in at, my old eyes here, $783,056, and we think that's a fairly firm number, but could change. And of course, if the county taxes go up, then the tax rate goes up. All right. And then, again, total appropriations, we're at 4.7%. We'll move on to the last page, the tax impact revenue. Couple of things I want to point out here. First of all, that revenue sharing, right up near the top there, revenue sharing is up, and, you know, percentage-wise, it's up significantly. And, but municipal revenue, the money that the city is taking in, is, again, these are large numbers, percentages sometimes can be deceiving, excuse me, but the money that the city takes in is 3.65%. I realize they're much bigger numbers that we're dealing with. However, what I want to point out is that the total revenue that we have here, now, revenue sharing comes from the state. So this is where we get our state money. It's not free money, but it's almost free money, okay? And let's look at the, go down to the school EPS numbers, give you a minute to find that, and school EPS numbers are up, okay, 7.9%, it might be 7.6%. So our sources of revenue, where we get money from the state, both through the funding, school funding formula, EPS formula, and from the municipal revenue sharing from the state, keep in mind that was going the other direction a few years ago, and it's starting to come back, it's not keeping pace with the revenue needs, the growth that we're experiencing in Sanford. Okay? We cannot count on the state to, I mean, they help, they reduce our tax rate, but they're not going to get us to that sustainable tax rate that we're looking for. It just isn't going to happen, and we can't count on the state to do that for us, nor do I think that's really their role, okay? Moving forward, I want to point out a significant part, piece in this budget, and I'm really not picking on the schools, but they did carry forward $625,000 last year. This year, there's no carry forward. So that's significant, a word to future Budget Committees. It's hard to build your budget on money that's carried forward from the previous year. You're taking last year's money, and you're bringing it forward into this year to reduce this year's tax rate. At some point, as we see here, you're not going to have that money, and then that hurts. All right. Just a few last summaries here. It always comes up when we look at undesignated, we've stuck with $850,000 for a number of years, and 850,000, simply put, is a number that works, it's sustainable. It's been questioned for a number of years, why don't we put more in? If we put more in, then we're going to have financial problems here in the town. Our accountant, our auditor service, our investment people, treasurer, all feel comfortable with 850,000, and so we stick with that amount, because that is a sustainable amount. So the net to be raised in taxation in the green line, again, this is the number I asked you to remember from a few slides ago, 33 million, having trouble reading it again, 33,631,842, okay, which gets us to a base mill rate of 2114. Then there are some other considerations that need to be factored in, and are factored in every year, which gets us to, again, an estimated mill rate increase of 14 cents or $20.84. Again, your typical $100,000 house, you're going to go from $2,070 a year to $2,084 a year, an increase of $14 per year, per year, okay? That's, you know, I don't know, I really haven't done the math on that, but I don't know what it works out to be. Buck and a quarter a month, something like that, so that's probably high. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn the mic back over to you, and I know you're going to run the public hearing. I'm available for questions on this, as is the city manager, and I believe the superintendent is here also, so.
Excellent. Thank you for that excellent summary, Council Stacpo. City Manager Buck, could you maybe put us on the tax impact page, maybe the first slide that was presented, just as we're answering questions, maybe have a visual on what we're looking at, at least initially, that we can bounce? And I may be behind you, I'm not seeing anything yet. Or, I'm sorry, you weren't controlling the slides, were you, Council Stacpo?
No, I am.
Oh, okay.
Just put the backup. So this is the first page of the tax impact. Soon you'll see the tax impact appropriations page.
All right, so this is the order I'd like to go in, if possible. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to hear from anybody in the public that would like to speak, and then we can answer any questions or comments from the Budget Committee, and any comments from the school committee, I know some of those people are here tonight. And then we'll finally ask the city council, again, we're going to vote on this later, so if it's, you know, questions and, you know, issues or whatever from the city council, that would be something to do now, but otherwise, maybe save comments to the line item. But with that, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
I would note that if somebody is trying to speak from the public, please check to see if your mic is muted or unmuted. Many of your mics are muted, so if you wish to speak, you're going to have to unmute your microphone.
And you can also do that by just hitting, holding the space button on your computer. I'm going to give it a few more seconds. Okay, so if anyone from the public wants to chime in after the conversation that follows, just please let me know, just feel free to, you know, speak right up and I'll call on you. Anyone from the Budget Committee want to comment on the presentation or the budget process?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, this is Council Lanigan. I think I brought this up at the previous council meeting, and I know that there was some interest in it possibly about funding a communications director position, and I didn't, I know hard numbers are going to be hard to come by with everything that's going on, so I didn't know if the council was still entertaining that, and if we just wanted to kind of placeholder the position with a number and go from there, and let the city manager kind of take it from here.
So maybe you could put your city councilor hat on as we finalize this conversation, and then we'll bring that back up.
Sounds good.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I just didn't know with that.
Sorry, you cut off there, Council Lanigan. Okay. Any other Budget Committee members like to speak on behalf of budget? Okay, anyone here from the school committee that would like to speak? Is Superintendent Nelson on the phone, or joining the call?
Yes, I'm here, yes, I'm here.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Excellent. Any comments or concerns as we present this budget this evening?
No, I want to thank the Budget Committee and thank Council Stacpo did a really good job presenting that. On behalf of the school committee, we feel it's a responsible budget that we've worked hard to put forward, and at the same time, there's been some things that have been increasing for us in the last couple budgets, that I think in this budget, we've done our best to try to right-size. That's particularly in our increases in substitutes, and also our unanticipated outside placement special education costs. As Council Stacpo talked about, there is no carryover in this budget, so we're doing everything that we can to do, to right-size what we can. We feel like the, anything that is in there is something we're able to defend in terms of its requirements, so, no, that's all I got to say.
Excellent. Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Yeah, when we first, probably you and I arrived about the same time on the scene, when we first had these conversations as related to school budget, there was actually a carryover deficit, if you remember that. But then we built that up over a number of years to actually a substantial amount, and some of those funds were used to offset budget increases and things of that nature. Do you see that it trending into the red at this point, or is, you know, which way do you feel that the carryover now is going?
I feel, obviously, right now, we've got a lot of construction projects going on and things that way, so we're trying to be very careful and very cautious, and so I would, I'm pretty confident in that it's stabilizing, so I think we're just being responsible in terms of that. So I feel like we're doing our best to have it hold steady rather than trend back into the red.
Perfect, thank you. Any other folks from the school want to talk on behalf of this budget? Okay, so then we'll open up to the city council. Any city councilors with questions or comments about the budget? And again, we're going to vote on this moving ahead, so if it's, you know, a positioning statement, I'd ask you to hold it, but if there's questions for any of the folks that presented tonight or this evening, that'd be great.
I have a question, this is Laura.
Yep.
So as the, when we look at the city revenues, what portion of that is an increase in assessment? And is the 14, do you feel the 14 cents is artificially low, and that a lot of the increase is actually coming from property tax valuation changes, and it's actually going to hit harder than we're anticipating for people?
So I'll answer that. The $40 million that's in the valuation currently, the increased valuation currently, came from our assessor early on in the process. Bear in mind that we've just crossed the April 1st assessment date, they'll be finalizing those up, but the market rate analysis was done on the residential and commercial properties, so the increases that brought us back to the 92%, approximately 5% increase in valuation on the residential and certain categories of commercial properties are in that $40 million number, as well as, I believe, there was an amount of 14 million of known new valuation currently at that point in time, and also at the time of this estimate being created, none of the new personal property was in that number at all. But that's why I've been able to say that I believe that that valuation number that we're showing currently as an estimated increase of $40 million is a conservative number. I don't have the breakout for you currently as far as what percentage would be increased property valuation reflective of the market versus what that number will settle out to be for new valuation. I can get that after the assessment date closes out and they complete that information, but I do not have that for this evening.
Did I ask you a question, Council Earl Hee?
It does, but 5% increase on valuation, you know, and you tack on 14 cents, definitely shows a different picture. I think we need to be careful how we're telling people 14 cents if there's a 5% valuation change, because they're going to see, definitely higher than $14, I mean, 14 cents per $100,000. They're going to see something more significant than that, so, you know, it's, I find this process and using the cents, the cents change from year to year as kind of disingenuous because the valuation changes are a huge part of our tax change as well.
Yeah, agreed. I would say the complication in that is that really the tax, this whole budget process should follow the valuation, not in reverse, right? So we've had some major surprises out of the assessor office, and I guess that, I had written down a question, City Manager Buck. Has it been an early read, I mean, you may have just answered it, and I may have just missed it, but from the assessor about, you know, the average, well, not the average, the single-family home category in Sanford, is there any sense of which way that's going to go?
Yes, as I indicated earlier, there's about a 5% change overall in the single-family residential as far as the market, and the assessor only brought those up to the 92% of the state valuation certification. By bringing them to 92%, that gives us 100% of the state benefit in homestead, veterans exemption, in other areas, disability. uh, in, in other areas, uh, disability exemptions and such under that. Uh, we could bring them all the way up to a hundred percent, but that would put an undue burden on the residential versus the commercial property. So, uh, they're, they're set currently at the ninety-two percent, so we can maximize the benefit. Uh, as we're talking, I'm, I'm going through my files here, I'm trying to find the homestead exemption analysis that we did, so if you can, uh, move forward to some other questions potentially, I'll, I'll see if I can pull those graphics up.
Yeah, is, is that, is that the line of where the taxes become flat, I mean, is it like the, here's generally by category which, what you'll be paying as far as your house value?
Yeah.
That'd be helpful, absolutely, because, you know, what was, I guess what's confusing, and I think, Councilor Hurley, this is what you mentioned, the the, the, the net to be raised by taxes is, is over four percent. But if you look at the tax rate increase, it's actually less than one percent, it's, it's point six, seven percent increase, which would be remarkable i- if the valuation actually was, you know, flat year on year. Um, so with the homestead and, and, you know, being applied, so, you know, it's difficult analysis, obviously, to, to deliver without knowing the assessment. The other part of the assessment, obviously, is that there's other categories, right? So i- if business and multifamilies are up, well, it's, you know, it offsets some of the increases you see somewhere else. Um, my, my hope is that all housing in Sanford is up, so we'd, we'd alleviate some of the pressure on the single-family homestead folks.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna add, doing some quick math, I mean, say it was, you know, a hundred thousand, for every hundred thousand, it went up to a hundred and five. That's a hundred dollar difference in per hundred thousand in what someone's paying in taxes from one year to another, and I know you can't do some simplistic math like that, could be higher, could be lower, but I think that assessment change is a huge factor in what the tax, the taxes are actually going to be for people, what they're actually going to be feeling with that fourteen cents.
Yeah, agreed, and, and, you know, let's face it, if you're trying to sell your house today versus two months ago, I think you're having a different experience. Um, so, City Manager Buck, I know you're, you're chasing that slide, um, is, does, is the assessor taking into effect the recent situation with COVID-nineteen? I mean, is it, is it, can, can they act or respond that quickly?
No, because it's based upon the current year, uh, state state analysis as far as the market numbers are concerned, so, um, you talk with your area realtors, uh, our, our real estate here in Sanford is still very hot commodity. Uh, I can't say over the last three weeks what the impacts may or may not be as far as that market, but as far as the last year that all of this data is set upon, uh, we've not seen any negative response.
Understood, but I mean, so our median home value is what?
A hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty thousand, so I, I, I would venture to guess that it's gonna be that market that gets the impact, not the four hundred thousand dollar, you know, market that gets the impact, because a hundred and sixty thousand dollar home generally is purchased by, you know, folks that are, that are in, in, all, all the same group that probably is impacted by layoffs and things of that nature, so I just, I would be cautious about wide upticks in our assessment, I wouldn't believe it. I, I know, I realize that the limitation's as far as the data that he's got to research, but I, I, I think that our market here is gonna be, is gonna be felt, and I think by the buyers that maybe felt like they had the money to buy three months ago, that maybe not now. Um, so I guess it remains to be seen, so.
Tom, I don't mind them doing the assessment change, I know that's required by law, so that's not an issue for me at all. But I will say that just a hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, you know, if you have a five percent increase, um, you know, just simplistically again, 'cause I know some may be higher, some may be lower, you're looking at a two hundred doll, a two hundred dollar difference between this year and last year. So, it, it's significant change, that fourteen cents with an assessment adjustment like that is a significant change.
Yeah, and, and, and that's not to take away from the work at the Budget Committee, and, and, you know, I wanna thank that group, I mean, on paper, it's a very, it's a very small impact, you know, so they, they, they did a good job whittling down sort of the, the net outcome, um, but, you know, looking at this chart, I know there's not that many homes in Sanford that have this, you know, um, over, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value, but boy, we go to those people for the well every time, and, you know, it, it, it's the whole housing conversation we've had a hundred times, but there, there's, there's a group that continues to be impacted that could easily sell their house and then move to a different community, that probably have the same outcome in a different town as far as what they actually pay on a monthly basis. And I think we've reached that point, um, but.
And Tom, I don't think those numbers are at all accurate when factoring in the adjustments to assessment.
Okay, so, City Manager Buck, you found your data.
I found my data, uh, these numbers are accurate, so this, this, uh, graphics take, um, we'll take, for example, a hundred thousand dollar house, it was worth a hundred thousand dollars last year, I first increased that by five percent, it's now worth a hundred and five thousand dollars. I applied the, this is the homestead exempt property, I then applied, um, the new homestead going from twenty to twenty-five thousand, also bring into the municipal budget the, uh, one point five million dollars that's brought in from the state reimbursement going from sixty-two percent to sixty-seven and a half percent. So the impact on that hundred thousand dollar home would see a, a decrease of fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents. The crossover point this year is at approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you see their tax bill go down by eighty cents. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, for which we have very few, would see a net tax bill of a hundred and five dollars and forty cents. The reason you can't apply the simplistic math to this is the significant change in the homestead uh, exemption and especially the rate of, uh, reimbursement by the state. So there's, there's a higher impact to our mil rate as far as mil rate reduction because of the increased state reimbursement on the homestead than it is for the five thousand dollar increase on the homestead itself. But looking at the distribution graph that I have below here, you can see that, uh, if we're looking at that two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, ninety-two point oh-six percent of the, of the property tax cards on single-family residential dwellings in our community fall at that two hundred and fifty thousand rate and below, or five thousand seven hundred and fourteen of our sixty-two hundred.
Okay, so Steve, this is excellent, this is a lot better than just the simplistic, like the feeling that you're doing simplistic math. But I, I think these charts should definitely always be part of the presentation, because you have to factor the assessment in. And the other thing is, I think on your charts, you should at least have a few of the major assessment, um, assumptions, like down below. The assumptions and the math factored in that assessment change. I mean, this, Mr. Stackpole's presentation did not include this sort of a, of a breakdown.
Right, this is, uh, just coming on your screen, for some reason I can't get all of it to fit on your screen, there it is. This is the non-simplistic math, uh, that's gone into this, you see there's valuation ranges, uh, the counts, the percentage increase by valuation range, it's all brought into these factors to get as accurate a view from one year to the next as physically possible. Uh, and then I keep in a record its history in the bottom of this graph, when, when it scrolls up for you in the yellow areas, that's looking at the year-over-year changes in the mil rate, uh, and our valuation numbers, uh, and then it feeds back into the multi-year analysis, that we, we've got, um, actually a seven-year analysis in this, I haven't changed the graph yet, but there, there are seven-year analysis as opposed to the six. Uh, so then when we're looking at that twenty-year history that's, that's coming up now, I find this, this is getting, there's so much data in here now that it's, it's getting blurred there, this, this multicolored graph that's in there now. Uh, you can see that the hundred thousand dollar home, this year's estimated tax of sixteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the green bar, uh, is the lowest that it's been in the past, uh, six-plus years. Yes. You see the, the fifty thousand dollar home, um, is still far less, uh, than it was even, uh, six years ago.
Okay, so I think there's.
The higher the valuation, the less the homestead exemption pulls them down as a percentage of their overall, uh, tax bill. But again, we know that this two hundred and twenty, this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark, ninety-two percent of our homes fall at that point indoor below, so you can see the green and the blue bars are exactly the same height, that's that crossover point. The four thousand nine thirty, fifty last year versus four thousand nine hundred and forty-nine, fifty this year. And this, and that's after I've factored the same home as being five percent higher in valuation this year.
Okay, thank you. I believe there's another question from the council.
Ye- yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, first, uh, Manager Buck. Um, is it fair to say as we're looking also to shift the tax burden away from the majority to the single, uh, family taxpayer to, uh, commercial and, and multifamily? Um, most multifamilies and commercial properties are upwards of that two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar mark as a value, so that's helping us as, as, because the majority of the properties are below that, that threshold, is that helping us accomplish what we're looking to do in the long run?
We, we've had this, uh, conversation, uh, at, at, at length as we've looked at tax committee financing benefits towards, uh, going towards encouraging, uh, market rate housing development here in the city of, of Sanford. So, from that analyses, we know that it takes a hundred and ten thousand dollar per rental unit. So you need a valuation of a hundred and ten thousand dollars on a rental unit in order for the taxation thrown off from that to hit the break-even point. So, so, uh, so much of the, um, rental housing that we have here in the community that was built, the predominant of which was built pre-nineteen thirty-six, uh, has an average, uh, value of thirty-nine to forty thousand dollars per rental unit. So that's, that's the transference of burden, those are very, very low-tax, uh, housing units for which the single-family residential unit, the average tax card on that is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So you need all of those tax cards that are a hundred and ten thousand dollars and higher to make up for the differentials for all of those rental units, living units that are falling below a hundred and ten thousand dollar mark. That's the crossover point. So the new multifamily housing that's being developed, their development cost is exceeding and their, uh, estimated uh, rate of taxation would exceed the hundred and ten thousand dollar per, per rental unit. So that would, those new market rate housing units would start to decrease the burden on the single-family residential units.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Cody, it's Councilor Hanselman.
Yes.
So, uh, City Manager Buck, can you clarify this for me? When you're looking at that hundred thousand dollar, uh, value with a reduction of fifty-nine eighty, you're saying that includes the, a reimbursement at the higher rate, correct? Uh, of, of, of the homestead exemption that the city is receiving?
I'll go through the calculation again, the calculation's year-over-year, takes that hundred thousand dollar unit, it increases it by five percent, that was the average rate of increase for the single-family residential valuation card pursuant to the market analysis that was done, so it increases it by five percent first, the new and increased level of homestead, uh, exemption, and then it applies the new mil rate, uh, which includes a significantly increased uh, reimbursement by the state under the homestead exemption going from sixty-two to sixty-seven and a half percent. All of those factor into the mil rate, that where we have set estimated mil rate at twenty point eight four. So if, if the homestead exemption had not significantly changed this year, you would have, the simple math could have been applied. Uh, it's really the changes in the homestead exemption, um, and the other factors, uh, that we, that we've got to include increased, uh, state municipal revenue sharing this year, uh, increases in our EPS that allows us to not only absorb some of those expense increases that we incurred this year, but also have more of a tax savings in the single-family residential units, which are, which carry approximately sixty-seven percent of the overall tax burden in our community is, is on the back of the single-family residential unit.
Okay, any other questions as it relates to the presentation this evening from the council?
No.
Okay. Okay, um, so Larissa Ricketts, are you on the phone right now? I guess the question is, am I, am I supposed to read this into the public record? Is that what this person expects?
I would say yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are you seeing what I'm seeing, Councilor?
I am.
Okay. Okay, uh, per message from the public, uh, public comment via email, Rick Barnaby, four fifty-six Country Club Road. Four point six, seven percent increase when the inflation rate is one point seven percent, Stackpole will say we can't cut services, why not in capitals? He kept referring to a house budget and said we need to ask for a raise, well, no house budget, I know, works that way. He's going to educate the public, question mark? We have failed, and the answer is to sell, question mark? Sanford is a very welcoming community, then, very sad, I'm embarrassed to listen to this, sorry, that, that should have been, uh, read in public comment. And that was from public, uh, soon via email or chat. Okay, anything further from the council, or anybody from the public wanna speak at this point?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I will declare the joint public hearing closed, thank you. Consent agenda, any issues relating to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll declare the consent agenda approved. Old Business nineteen dash eight zero five dot zero one ordered to amend the acceptance of the bid for the demolition removal of forty-six High Street building to Gilmet Brothers, Inc., and the firm fixed price in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, so a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Councilor Stackpole, you're gonna be in charge of seconds, okay?
All right, okay.
Thank you. Okay, Director Houseill, do you have a quick briefing on this? Or anybody?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get back, I've got too many things running here, I'm trying to get back to the agenda, so be there with me for just a moment, please. You're on nineteen eight oh five?
Correct.
Yes, this is the correction of the, um, demolition bill.
Yes, so this is Ian, Houseill, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so I'll cover this one, um, this was, um, last, uh, time the City Council met, the, the award was made to a Green Shadow property maintenance. Uh, at the time that we attempted to sign the contract, um, they, um, withdrew their bid. Um, so they have forfeited their bid deposit, um, and, um, our intention is to award the project to the next lowest bidder, bidder. Um, and, uh, the cited reason was, uh, they didn't, uh, they weren't, they didn't wanna, uh, up their insurance, uh, requirements. Um, so it was, it was a low bid, um, it was, uh, questionable from that regard as was stated previously, um, and, um, after going through the vetting process, um, we would, uh, change that to the second lowest bidder, uh, we've worked with that second lowest bidder multiple times, and uh, in the bid analysis, it seemed, uh, that the, uh, price comparison was, uh, within, uh, thirteen thousand, excuse me, thirteen hundred, uh, to eighteen hundred dollars. Um, with the, uh, with the forfeiture of the, uh, bid deposit there of seven hundred and ninety dollars, uh, it brings those two bids uh, within, uh, striking distance of each other.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the council?
No.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, I'm gonna roll call a vote, Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councilor Lanigan?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
W. Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry seven to zero. Okay, nineteen dash eight thirty-seven dot zero one, review the draft findings in order, judging three Harvard Street tax map H twenty-nine lot sixty to be a dangerous building or nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA subsection twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order. Record it in the registry of deeds and serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law, a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Thank you. So my understanding of this is just, this allows the city managers sign the documents, uh, versus the City Council, is that correct, Director Houseill or City Manager?
That, that is correct, um, these are, that's simply what that is, it's, uh, previously requires all the city councilor's signatures, our current. It's previously requires all the city councilor's signatures, our current status with the social distancing is that we can take this additional action and have the city manager sign that and file it and serve it upon the parties in interest.
Thank you. Any questions in the council?
No.
So let me point out that you're going to do these three times, sorry.
Yeah, that, yep, so we're going to do three of these, if everybody can, if everybody in the council can unmute. Okay, we're going to do this three more times, please unmute, we're going to fly through it. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Debbie Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Nineteen dash eight thirty-eight dot zero one, review the draft findings in order, judging seventeen State Street tax map L twenty-seven lot forty-six to be a dangerous building or nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA subsection twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order and record it in the registry of deeds and serve it upon owners and parties of interest as required by law. A motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, question? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Debbie Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Nineteen dash eight thirty-nine dot zero one, review the findings, excuse me, review the draft findings in order, judging twenty-two Montreal Street tax map L twenty-eight lot sixty-six to be a dangerous building or nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA subsection twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order, record it in the registry of deeds and serve it upon the owner and parties of interest as required by law. A motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Questions? No? Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Debbie Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Lastly, on that topic, nineteen dash eight forty dot zero one, review the draft findings in order, judging fifty-two Brook Street tax map I twenty-eight lot thirty-one to be a dangerous building or nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA subsection twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order, record it in the registry of deeds and serve it upon the owner and parties of interest as required by law. A motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Questions? No? Roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Fell asleep.
Council Lanigan? Council Hurley?
Yes.
Debbie Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries six to zero.
Yes.
Thank you, carries seven to zero. Nineteen dash seven seven two dot zero one, ordered to approve amendment of chapter two-eighty, zoning and land use tables to allow commercial and utility-scale solar as conditional use in the rural residential RR and urban U zones. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Give me a second, please.
I'll second it. Give somebody else the motion, though, I think I was first in on the, on moving the motion, so.
Okay.
Move me to a second, give it to somebody else for the motion.
Yeah, Debbie Mayor, Debbie Mayor Hanslip also is in there, so use the motion, you're the second, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Who wants to give us the briefing? Council Stackpole, the zoning subcommittee heard this once more?
Yeah, there's really very little change to the, what was, what was presented. This was discussed at length, this once again was a teleconference that we had, and was discussed at length, and was determined by consensus, the members of the budget, excuse me, the zoning subcommittee, councilor members there, that we did not want to put in significant change, changes. Now, what we did do was we, we put in the wording for permanent hayland, and one of the things was that we wanted a definition of what permanent hayland was, and that definition is in the, in the proposal. And we also made sure that the planning committee had the ability to, we'll call it negotiate, the, the impact on prime or unique farmland soils. In other words, what they were, what they're, use the word empowered to do, is to try to minimize the impact of a solar project on prime, unique soils. So in other words, if you own a farm, you, you would try to, through the planning committee, put that in a, let's say, rocky area or what other, some other area that is not prime, prime soil. And we wanted to leave that, again, it's not a, they don't sit in judgment, the planning committee doesn't sit in judgment, but they have significant ability to negotiate the impact of the solar project. Those are really the only changes that we made, and again, there's some wording in there as to what permanent farmland by definition is.
If I could at this point, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, pursuant to the consensus of the zoning subcommittee, it was brought back to the original form, form of the amendments that were carrying the, the meeting prior to during the first read. It was discussed during the first read that there was a percentage allocation, a significant amount of work, and that wording was brought forward, was discussed at length at the committee level, and that, that, that discussion ended up deleting that, that consideration and bringing it back to the original amendment that was, had been previously negotiated. That has the two elements, the, the active hayland and the definition, we settled out on that, would be if a person is, is mowing their property to keep brush from growing in there and losing the property, that would not be considered active hayland, it would have to be land that is, the hay is being taken off for fee purposes and or sold otherwise as a cash crop, not just a mowing maintenance. And then the other element that was discussed at length is this section twenty dash thirteen dash five point one point nine, which states that proposed ground-mounted commercial solar system or utility solar system in the rural residential zone, and this was where all of the discussion lies, shall minimize impact on prime or unique farmland soils, farmland soils of statewide significance and active farmland. What that provides for is when the developer draws up such plans, they have to avoid those prime and or unique farmland soils to the greatest extent possible, show that to the planning board, and for those areas that they cannot avoid them, they can be granted a waiver pursuant to the site claim process. So that was the termination, the culmination of the large amount of discussion that went into this.
Okay, thank you. Quick question, I guess, or clarification. I, I think when we run into questions and issues with the city council and the planning board and business community, and we start to have these uncomfortable conversations in, around words like minimize, okay? So I'm just going to throw an example out, and I just want to get a sense of what, what would be the minimized approach here. So if I have a open field of prime farmland, as is described here, it's just of ten acres, and I wanted to put five-megawatt installation there, and that would all be on prime farmland, what would be the, I guess, approach of the planning board? What would be their ability to minimize that?
Would be the responsibility of the developer to, to show that in sizing that particular solar installation on that particular parcel of land, that the farmlands could not be avoided because it's consuming the entire parcel. If it didn't consume the entire parcel, they would be expected to avoid the farmland to the greatest extent possible, i.e. locating those in areas off prime farmland soils, if possible.
Okay.
That's where this whole discussion has gone around.
If I have a ten-acre parcel then, and I wanted to develop six acres of that, and let's say five acres of that was prime, okay, half of my land was considered prime, and I wanted to develop six acres, could, could then, that minimize, would, could there be a situation where there's a mandate that you could only develop the five acres?
No, so there, there's, there's language in here, and Beth Delavalle is on the phone, so she can chime in as well. It states that the planning board may waive the size limits for surface area and nameplate capacity if the applicant demonstrates to the board satisfaction that the additional surface area and or nameplate capacity is needed to meet the energy requirement for the intended onsite use. So that, that is that particular.
Okay.
For those that are going.
I, I'm just trying to avoid the post-conversations about, you know, this is usually what happens when, when the city council suddenly is getting involved, we're getting calls, it's because of muddy language, and, and that's what I'm trying to avoid here. Okay. Any other questions? We've seen this now multiple times. Any other questions from the council?
No.
Okay. Anyone here from the public chiming in on this item tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll do roll, roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Debbie Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's input on that. This has been a long process to get to this point, so I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding as we move forward here. New business, and appreciate everybody hanging in there for the new business, I'm sure that's why a lot of people are on the phone. New business nineteen dash eight fifty-four dot zero one, ordered to receive and take action on the budget committee's recommendation for the FY twenty-twenty-one municipal and school budgets. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Okay, further conversation within the council?
I, I'd just like to say just a few things before the vote. First of all, I want to thank everybody involved in the, in the budget process, both public and municipal schools. There was a lot of hard work that went into this, and regardless of the one comment that we did get via email, you know, I, I think this is a very good budget for the, for the city of Sanford. So again, I want to thank everybody who, who participated in this, and it was my, my, my pleasure truly to facilitate this whole process. The other thing, I just want to make sure I'm clear, that I've been clear, when I, when I talk about, you know, that the city needs a raise, what I'm, what I'm talking about is we need more revenue. The solution is not to cut programs and not to cut services. And in the email you received, and I'm sure there's other people out there who are not going to be happy that, you know, taxes didn't go down twenty-five cents or ten percent or however you want to calculate it, but they don't step forward and say, okay, well, I can live without this, or I can live without that. And this is the dilemma of public service, you know, as council members and, and as you serve other, other boards. People are upset because of, let's say, the, the increase in taxes, and they say it needs to be reduced, but yet they never offer anything and say, you know, I, I can live without, you know, maybe, let's just have three ambulances in Sanford instead of four, or let's just have one fire station in the center of town instead of having a couple of fire stations, or let's increase the class size to thirty, thirty-five kids and, and get a bunch of teachers get, you know, unemployed, you know, we don't need as many teachers, and so on and so forth, because going back to that one-point-five million, that's what it means. And what we need to do is recognize that the revenues that are coming from the state are not sufficient to cover the growing needs of our community. And we, and I know the city council and others are a hundred percent in on this, and we've been working very hard on this since probably before my time on the council. We need to continue to put our pedal to the metal to get more revenue to come into this state, to come into this city, to stabilize our tax rate. And that's our goal, I know that's the council goal, and I think everybody, everybody needs to hear that. We're going to get there, we're doing much better than we were, we're going to get there, you know, it's just going to take a little more, a little more time. So I, I want to make sure everybody gets that, gets that point, and, and, you know, we can, we can move forward from there.
Tom?
Thank you. Any other comments or?
Tom, it's Maura. I just wanted to say, you know, as we all must be thinking in our heads, you know, the concerns about what the state might cut through the COVID-nineteen situation, whether revenue sharing gets cut or state aid to education, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm more confident now, having seen Steve's analysis with the homestead exemption, that we're not at, we're not adding a hundred dollars with the assessment change to what the fourteen dollars that we talked about earlier. However, I also don't want to see the local taxpayer, property taxpayer, get hit because state, state aid to education or state revenue sharing get cut, or the homestead gets played with. I want to make sure that we understand that we might have to make cuts on the expense side later into this year, both of the school and the municipal, if, if, if bad things happen, let's say.
Thank you. Anything further?
No. I, I just, just to respond to Maura, I think, I think that that, that is something that needs to be considered, and I think it's, it's always considered. We've, we've been through budgets, up and down, Maura, you and I and, and many people on the council, and when, you know, when you got to tighten your belts, even after the budget's passed, then you have, you have to tighten your belt and you have to wait, find a way to cut expenses. So I appreciate, I appreciate the, the comment, I think it needs to be said, but we don't know what's going to happen. The feds have provided a bunch of money to states for stimulus, some of that's supposed to come to local municipalities, probably not going to fix things a hundred percent, but things may not be, may not be as, as dire as some people are predicting.
Hey, Council Hanselman?
Thank you. So, and just to both Councilors Stackpole and Hurley's comment, you know, I, I think that having had an opportunity for the first time to be on the budget committee and keeping in mind, keeping myself reminded that it was really unusual circumstances and how it all rolled out this year with the number of our meetings, but, you know, I, I got the sense, and we did get some feedback from a, a committee member, that, you know, these meetings for folks coming in from the public are just really insufficient to bring them up to speed on what's happening, you know, both on the city and the school side from a departmental standpoint, and, and to really, you know, feel like they have the ability to lean on some of these decisions, I think. So, you know, I, I just want to give a plug, having been on the budget committee, again, for us to reconsider, you know, annual, quarterly, you know, moving to a, a situation where our budget committee is meeting on a more frequent basis, and I'm excited that we're looking at the financial statements more, more frequently. I think that we need to do that, especially in light of some of these unknowns, so we can be proactive, like Council Hurley was saying, if, if changes come from the state funding, you know, but anyway, I, I just want to put in that I still think we need to revisit our budget committee, both its makeup, its frequency of meetings, and, and I, I'm not sure how effective we can be, you know, as a, as a committee coming together in a really short period of time, you know, trying to make recommendations, honestly, with, with the information we're getting. So we're really relying heavily on City Manager Buck and Superintendent Nelson to, you know, bring appropriate recommendations to us, I guess. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
No.
Okay, again, I just want to reiterate a thank you, a big thank you to the budget committee, it's a sacrifice, and then this year's obviously been unusual. We appreciate you hanging in there and seeing the process through. You know, I'll, I'll echo Council Stackpole's comments about revenue, you know, the whole, I've been on the budget, this is the first year I've been on the budget committee, and I think. I've been on the budget, this is the first year I've been on the budget committee, and I think eight years. So thank you for participation in my replacement. But again, Sanford has a revenue problem. We have a number of different dynamics in place, but certainly revenue is a big part of the concern here. I think we've made lots of progress in that regard, more work to be done, obviously, but we've just got to keep, keep doing our thing and pushing ahead, and you know, I just happened to look online, and I can say the tax rate, and now we don't compare tax rates, but it was higher five years ago than it is right now. You know, the challenge really now is in valuation and, you know, increasing the valuations in the right spot. So, you know, I think we're making progress. I know it's difficult. I mean, the one comment from the public, I get it. I mean, I pay an absolute ton in taxes. So, you know, we got to do a better job, long-term planning in how we start ratcheting this down, and I think the only way we're going to be able to do that really is through aggressive revenue tactics, and, you know, that was the driver behind my support tonight for the solar, for example. Every one of these solar developments is money in the bank for the city and the taxpayers, so it's things of that nature. We need to, need to put the foot on the gas and all kind of revenue increase developments, and so. But again, thank you for all the teams, Steve, Ronnie, Paula, Matt, and your team. Thank you for seeing this through, and we'll move forward. Mr. OJ, you're in the audience. I see there's a hand up. You may have had the hand up for a very long time. I apologize. I just noticed this now. Are you still on the line? You'd like to speak?
No, Mayor, I was just giving the little applause icon to share your sentiments. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Okay. We appreciate all you're doing, the distance learning.
Thank you.
Hang in there. Okay, anything else? See none, we'll move forward. Roll call vote. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole? Council Stackpole?
Yep, yes.
Yep, thank you. Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor hands up?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. So again, thank you, everyone. I have a sneaky suspicion the phone lines are going to get a little lighter here after that topic, so. Moving forward, nineteen dash eight forty-three dot zero one, voted by the city council for the city of Sanford, Maine, as follows. Number one, that a capital acquisition, acquisition project, the project consisting of a lease of a twenty-twenty Pierce enforcer pumper truck is hereby approved. And, number two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of six hundred and one thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars is awarded to PNC Equipment Finance with a term of eight years at an interest rate of three point two nine two percent, and annual payments shall be subject to annual appropriation. And, number three, that the city manager and treasurer of the city are hereby authorized to each individually in the event the other is unavailable to execute the lease purchase agreement and all other documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed one hundred and twenty percent of the economic life of the project. And lastly, five, that said lease is hereby not designated a bank-qualified tax exempt obligation on the town of the twenty-twenty tax calendar under the provisions of section two sixty-five, subsections B, subsection three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen dash, excuse me, nineteen eighty-six as amended. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. That was a mouthful. Could you give us the synopsis of this, City Manager Buck?
I can. Our finance director is on the line this evening as well, Ronnie Lynn Champlin. She worked with our bond council to develop this language. The city council has already accepted the bid on the seven-year lease of the fire pumper truck. We've already authorized that. We also authorized the ordering of that truck ahead of time, because it will not be received until well into the next fiscal year. This is the bond package that goes with that for the lease purchase. Again, it's a seven-year lease on the truck. We can turn it in at that point in time and/or purchase it out at that point in time.
Clear enough? Any questions?
No.
See, sorry, go ahead. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor hands up?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. One more of these bang guys. Nineteen dash eight forty-two dot zero one, voted by the city council for the city of Sanford, Maine, as follows. Number one, that a capital acquisition project, a project consisting of the leases of LED streetlights is hereby approved. Two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and twelve dollars is awarded to Forum Savings Leasing Group with a term of five years at an interest rate of two point four two percent, and annual payments, payments, excuse me, shall be subject to annual appropriation. And number three, the city manager and treasurer of the city are hereby authorized to each individually in the event that the other is unavailable to execute the lease purchase agreement and all other documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed one hundred and twenty percent of the economic life of the project. And lastly, five, that said lease is not hereby designated a bank-qualified tax exempt obligation on the town of the twenty-twenty calendar year under the provisions of section two sixty-five, subsection B, subsection three of the Internal Revenue Code nineteen dash eighty-six, excuse me, nineteen eighty-six as amended. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Director Houseill, City Manager Buck?
I'm going to wait for Director Houseill to weigh in on this. This is in his Bailey Wickens Community Development Director, and he's working on the LED, the conversion of our current high-pressure sodium and other lights to LED. It's going to produce an annualized savings of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars that will go towards paying for this municipal lease. Ian, are you ready to comment?
Yeah, Ian, are you there now? I can speak to that. Yeah, sorry. Just give me a moment. I got to move my other item here. So you previously authorized the award. We're at the financing point. We're actually currently finishing up the audit. We're in a position where we're prepared to purchase the existing streetlights from Central Main Power and get started on the project. We have a tentative completion date of the end of June. I don't, I don't completely know, you know, how the, how the virus will affect that timeframe, but we've got a lot of interested contractors on the project. I had a brief call today with our contractor on this, and we're going to touch base again on Friday. And we're ready to rock and roll. We have a signed contract on this. It's a positive cash flow project from the start, so this project is reflected in the budget. You are going to see a savings of equal to the payment amount per year on your electricity for that period of five years. And then after that, the expected life on these lights is approximately ten to twenty years, so that during that timeframe, you'll recoup that full savings after that repayment period. Additionally, in the first year, so that'd be next year, the first lease payment is not due until the next fiscal year, so you'll be experiencing the full savings of that in the first year. So effectively, the payments on this will be for five fiscal years into the future, so full savings the first year, and then five additional years. And then additionally, the price on this, these are fully controlled lighting. Each one of them has a Verizon router on it, so it'll provide information about lights that are on, lights that need maintenance. And then additionally, during this time period, we've been getting this project up and going, we've been having conversations with MDOT regarding how to do traffic counts, how to censor roads so that we get good commuter information. And then additionally, we've been in discussions with Verizon and also VHB, one of the city's contractors, about how to connect the streetlight network to our broadband network. So I'm expanding the availability of broadband along the roadways. So, and then additionally, MDOT and the Build Grant, that would be the traffic control system citywide to integrate all those, is also related to this. So MDOT will potentially use the streetlight system for mid-block sensors for traffic control reasons, and other things that we might use this streetlight system and piggyback that onto our broadband system.
Excellent. Thank you. That's, that's an exciting development, for sure. Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
Okay, see none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor hands up?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. Nineteen dash seven sixty-five dot zero one, order to authorize up to fifteen thousand dollars to be taken from the Public Works Capital Improvement Program for twenty twenty-one to match funds already secured for a Sanford market analysis to evaluate proposed infrastructure requirements and development of preliminary designs as part of downtown Sanford Plan Partnership Initiative with Main DOT. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is Director Hill here, or anyone speaking on behalf of this item? City Manager Buck?
Which order are we on again?
This is the, this is the Main DOT study, the fifteen thousand dollars out of CIP and the Public Works. So it's nineteen dash six, seven sixty-five, excuse me.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Did we skip nineteen dash eight forty-four?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Yep.
That's confusion. Thank you.
Is there, is there a necessary order?
No, there is not. So you want to, I'll do the nineteen dash seven sixty-five at this point, pulling that up. This is on the. Yep, not a problem. This is on the market analysis, and Director Delavalle is on the phone here as well. It has an estimated, again, this is on the market analysis for our downtown. That, that area is fully encompassed by the public planning initiative that we have ongoing with Main Department of Transportation. Main Department of Transportation has committed not less than a hundred thousand dollars into that downtown engineering that's going to go on on our streets, which we will then utilize that engineered product to go into the MDOT work plan. Market analysis is something that was last done in nineteen ninety-five for the downtown area. It definitely needs to be updated. There is a cost estimate of approximately sixty thousand dollars for that. The city has allocated five thousand dollars from its capital improvement fund, and the EPA multi-purpose grant has allocated forty thousand dollars for the market analysis. That leaves us with a fifteen thousand dollar shortfall. What the motion is asking for is to allow for that fifteen thousand dollar shortfall to be taken from the next fiscal year's capital improvements road projects, because it's going towards leveraging the hundred thousand dollar PPI study that's ongoing by the Main Department of Transportation, and the market analysis is part of that commitment pursuant to the PPI.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan? Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor hands up?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. All right, let's backtrack up to nineteen dash eight forty-four dot zero one, ordered to authorize capital projects, based project and supplemental project for new high school and regional technical center, and the issuance of bonds to finance said capital projects, and to adopt order number nineteen dash eight four-four dot zero one, and to form, presented, and then tested copy of said order be filled with the minutes of this meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is deja vu, City Manager Buck. I thought we already did this.
No, this is for the eight point six million dollars for the school renovation and reconstruction, and I'll turn over for a comment to Superintendent Matt Nelson.
Excellent. Superintendent Nelson?
I think he's left the conference.
Okay, could you give us the briefing then? This is just a matter of accessing the bond that was approved?
It is. So this bond was approved last November by the voters of the city of Sanford. It's rated eight point six million dollars. It is, again, for the renovation and reconstruction project, which we're calling the pre-K through there. It's a pre-K through middle school project that's ongoing currently. It covers the shortfall that was necessitated by the increased cost of construction and unanticipated asbestos movement that needs to take place in order to finish that project. We worked with our bond council in order to produce the documents for this borrowing that was authorized last November, and this entitles us, once this is authorized, to go to the main bond bank and be able to do that during the spring drawdown.
Perfect. Any other questions or input from the council?
No.
Okay, see none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor hands up?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carries seven to zero. Nineteen dash eight fifty-three dot zero one, order to sign the municipal warrant to call for a June ninth, twenty twenty, school budget validation referendum. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Given, I would ask the city council to consider tabling this for this evening for the reason being, at the time that this was submitted by our municipal clerk, Sue Cody, just the week prior to, this was the warrant that was setting forward the June ninth election as anticipated, with all of the elements that are in that warrant that's necessary for the school budget validation, setting forward the voting places and the times and the availability of absentee ballots. Pursuant to a conversation that we were on with the mayor's coalition Monday, it was disclosed then that the governor was looking at that point in time. They had been examining how to accomplish the June ninth elections, given all of the COVID-nineteen impacts right now, closures of offices currently, difficulty in getting absentee ballots, voting ballots, programming of machines and such under that. It was discussed at one point in time to do an all-male ballot process, to do a hundred percent of everything by absentee ballots, but there are concerns that that raises some constitutional issues by not providing for an in-person voting opportunity for individuals. I conferred with the, so the governor was indicating to us on Monday that she was working with her staff to put an executive order forward to push the election to July fourteenth of this year. So I called our city clerk early this morning to see if she had heard anything more on that. She had not, but I received word at about five thirty this evening that Julie Flynn, the assistant secretary of. Was indicating that they are pushing for that July fourth meeting.
I went there.
That being said, I would ask that, a moment, I'll mute that other mic. That that being said, I would ask that, a moment, I'll mute that other mic. That that being being said, there's a reasonable assurance that
Even we've watched you.
That over the next one to two days, we would get a word from the state that they would move that to July fourteenth. So I'd ask you to table that for this evening, conferred with Sue Cody, our clerk, so we could act on whatever date is set for the next council meeting on April twenty-first and still be acting timely on the one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I moved it. We would table this item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurleyhe?
Yes.
Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, motion is tabled for now and would be further guidance from the state level. Okay, nineteen dash eight fifty-eight dot zero-one, proposed amendment of chapter two eighty zoning regarding membership of site plan review committee. This item must be read on two separate days, meetings. This is the first reading. Anything further on this?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yep.
Uh, so I've done site plan in the past. I've never gone to site plan now, even though I'm assigned to it. I think the council representation, so we pulled out from the Board of Selectmen days when they were more in charge of everything directly and they tended to cover over all aspects of city hall functions. Site plan really is about the details of the project. If we have developers that are having problems that are not normal, they can also, they can still turn to the city council to manage those if necessary. But I I would agree that the city council participation is really not necessary unless something becomes politically charged.
Okay, anything further on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Bob Stackpole, the zoning committee, the zoning committee did come to consensus on this and agreement that this particular participation of this committee is no longer needed.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we will see this again in two weeks. Okay, nineteen dash eight fifty dot zero-one, order to approve a request for a M D O T over limit permit for construction. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Speaker Buck?
Yeah, three facts explanation on this. There is a scope of work in here that the Main Department of Transportation is going to be performing here inside of the municipal limits of the city of Sanford on state, state roadways, that they have the responsibility for the paved surface area. What your granting of the over limit permit does, it allows for the transport of heavy heavy equipment that's non-divisible. So that means it can't be broken into individual components, cost-effectively and transported in smaller units that has to come in in one piece. The contractor, if you grant this over limit permit, the contractor has to provide for a bond in order to transport over municipal ways. Should they cause damage to the road surface, that bond would pay for such said damage. This is something that we get nearly on a yearly basis. Should anticipate a large number of these over the next few years because we have a significant number of projects inside of the main Main Department of Transportation roadway. So I would recommend the approval of the over limit permit. This is very much an ongoing and regular process.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Roll call vote. Councilman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurleyhe?
Yes.
Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. And last thing tonight, nineteen dash eight forty-five dot zero-one, order to make available a program for pay-as-you-throw bags to make them available due to inability to pay or inability to access as set forth. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Speaker Buck?
Uh, excuse me. So pursuant to the direction received from the property subcommittee, gosh, last week, yeah, sorry, seems like a long time ago, last week, the concerns were several people have raised issues around the pay-as-you-throw bags. A, that their financial situation's ongoing because of COVID nineteen impact whereby individuals may not be able to afford to purchase pay-as-you-throw bags. So to address the affordability piece highlighted in here that our general assistance program already does have this in place. They already were providing what's called a non-food voucher, food for one sleeve of bags per month, so you can choose the size that fits your needs best. And it's redeemable at Haniford Brothers, Haniford Brothers only because that system is set up, if somebody redeems one of the vouchers, whatever size sleeve they purchased, Haniford Brothers then builds the G A department directly. For individuals that feel they're financially unable to purchase the pay-as-you-throw bag at this point in time, they can simply call the general assistance number of two zero seven three two four nine one one zero. The applicant will make an appointment by phone. The G A administrators can process that completely by phone and, if qualified, issue a non-food voucher to them, again, for the one sleeve per month. I put a notation down here that states, per the new federal guidelines under the emergency formula, the threshold for qualification has increased. In other words, more people would now be qualified for assistance because of the COVID nineteen. That's a federal act that has increased that eligibility. And also those persons that now would qualify qualify for a much higher benefit under the emergency guidelines for general assistance than they would have required to. So talking with our director, John White, on the general assistance program, he has seen a slight uptick in requests under the program, but he has also found that he's able to provide more assistance and of a higher nature because of the new increase in federal benefits. So that addresses the affordability portion of it. As far as access, other concerns were expressed that there was, there are people that have concerns about getting outside of their their unit during the same place and going to the grocery store and therefore they have difficulty in obtaining the pay-as-you-throw bags. Waste Zero, the supplier for the pay-as-you-throw bags, has implemented the program. That program is not actually finalized and going live until tomorrow, so I couldn't put that number in here for tonight, but they're going to offer a order, mail order program, where you can use your credit or debit card. You can order a unit of bags and there's a two-dollar shipping and handling on those bags and they'll be mailed directly to your place of residence. Again, Waste Zero, they're having a hard time staffing up, getting people enough to put this program because the city of Sanford is by far not the only community that's asking for this type of a program. They've been assigning all of their staff. They've seen a three hundred percent spike in production. Everybody's buying toilet paper, everybody's buying a pay-as-you-throw bag, they're buying in bulk and then going to the store less, so they've seen that huge push as well. What we're offering for this evening is to call the Public Works phone number two zero seven three two four nine one three five after today, starting tomorrow. We're supposed to be providing these eight hundred numbers for Waste Zero and they will fulfill our mail order program to address the accessibility. The resolution is the last part of this document. It addresses the inability to pay through the general assistance office and it addresses the inability to access through the now pending Waste Zero mail order program. The committee also looked at the impact if pay-as-you-throw bags were to be suspended. There would be the issues of trying to re-implement, how you how you re-implement when people stop using them. We know directly from communities that suspended the pay-as-you-throw program and a multitude of difficult-to-dispose products ended up at the curbside and there was an inability to collect that and now they're faced with a nap. So there's there's that piece. Also, it is about a seventy-seven thousand dollar per month hit. We anticipated about a month and a half, a hundred and ten thousand dollar impact and those impacts were discussed as being twofold, either decreasing services in a particular area and or increasing taxation in order to make up for that shortfall. Again, the program was to address inability to pay and access and there is a resolution supporting that.
Okay, questions from the council? Comments?
No.
So Speaker Buck, as far as the the reimbursement element, the new federal guidelines and the federal directive for the for the emergency response, i- is there a reimbursement element of that built in? Let's say we give out a thousand rolls of trash bags. Is there any sort of reimbursement as far as, you know, from the federal government to fund that portion of the program?
No, I've had Director Henry looking at all of the various areas that he that he anticipates to be available under the new FEMA guidelines. He's going through those currently. We're finding that the guidelines that have been issued, even on the FEMA reimbursement, are, shall I say, an evolving equation. They're currently under development. Take, for example, the the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. I've seen three major amendments to that and it's only been effective since people second. So it's very much a moving target. The feds are pivoting on this on a daily basis. We have found all of our normally known areas that we've dealt with in storm and large natural disaster elements in the past, we're tracking those currently. I set that up long before the governor did the declaration, which has now been accepted by the president that does allow for the reimbursement to come forward. We've been tracking those elements as best to our ability, but I've not seen anything in there as far as solid waste disposal, as far as the COVID nineteen response is concerned. We continue to look for that, but I've not seen it as of yet.
Thank you. So from property subcommittee perspective, we did discuss this at length. You know, really, the two concerns were the ability to pay, obviously, you know, we don't want people doing is, you know, buying trash bags over food for their family. If they're in a very difficult position and we're making choices about what gets done and what doesn't get done, obviously, reach out, work with the general assistance and to make sure these people got the necessary resources and that could just include a sleeve of trash bags to help them get through this. The other part of it, honestly, was the, some people just don't want to go to the store and be exposed and they're really taking social distancing seriously. And then that was that was part two. So, Speaker Buck, could we get this information up on the website and also a statement revolving on channel twenty-six to make sure that people at home, particularly, you know, the senior citizens that may not be on social media or online, can have this information at their hands?
Yes, we'll see to it that that takes place.
Perfect. Okay, any else from the council on this topic?
No.
Long night. All right. So thank you for putting that together and hopefully, hopefully we'll help a few people out here. All right, roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurleyhe?
Yes.
Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, it carries seven to zero. And that was the last topic on the agenda and we'll open it up to council member comments. Council Hanselman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Council Stackpole?
Yes, and I've probably spoken enough tonight, but I want to say thank you again to everybody involved in the budget process for their hard work and positive outcome. And I also want to thank my fellow council members for supporting the work of the Budget Committee. I think that that's very important. And I want to say to everybody in general, stay safe, stay well, and good luck.
Thank you. That's right, lost my place here. Council Tuttle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate your comments on the passing of Alan Mapes, a great man who will be greatly missed by his community. I always quote Longfellow, that good people all remind us we can live our lives sublime, departing leave behind us footprints on the sands of time. So Alan, rest in paradise.
Thank you. Council Lanigan?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the city manager and Larissa and just the team in the city during this time. I really, other than the updates from the city manager, I haven't had to put too much thought into the city, which has been nice, been able to focus on our family and and stuff like that. So I just want to express my gratitude to him because I know that the amount of hours that he's pouring into the information that he's sharing with us and keeping us all up to speed. So thank you very much. My heart goes out to the Mapes family tonight and just be everybody in our community that's working hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council Hurleyhe?
I can just echo everybody else's thoughts. I didn't want to ask if we're if we're even going to consider opening yard waste at the dump or if we're not going to be able to do that. That's that's the one complaint people have is the yard waste.
All right, can we can we handle that under future gen items?
Of course.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Council Hurleyhe?
No, that's it this evening.
Okay, Mayor Hanslip?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Special thanks to the city manager, the administration and the department heads for doing such a great job of keeping the city going, adapting when necessary and keeping us informed. Thank you to all the city managers, to all the city employees that continue to work, that continue to keep government moving forward. And a special thank you to communications dispatchers and our first responders, police, fire, paramedics for doing a great job under trying circumstances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. And again, I want to echo my my thanks and support for Speaker Buck and Ms. Larissa Ricketts and all the city staff. Everybody's really coming together, working hard and making sure that the city operations still continues. So thank you for all that. Another just mention of Alan Mapes. Alan and I worked really closely together for a long time, chasing the York Pines, you know, amusement attraction initiative. We had countless meetings at the Mapes office and had a lot of laughs and he's a really neat guy. I would see him on the weekends up at the Shed Restaurant, you know, and in recent times would just give him a quick update, what was going on. And it was just, he was always a really great guy to talk to. So I wanted to, you know, kind of be my friend and want to, you know, my condolences to the Mapes family and, you know, he's he'll leave a lasting impression on this community, that's for sure. On a total shift of comment, you know, these times is interesting. So everybody's kind of dealing with, you know, working from home, students are at home, you know, we're having these meetings around home. The need for bandwidth is incredible. And in our direction as far as Sanford Net Fiber and fiber to the premise, hopefully at some point here, it's really going to be the wave of the future. I mean, it's we're so far ahead of the game in a lot of ways, but taking that next step to give fiber to everyone's home, I think we realize now what that would mean. You know, in my home, we're all sort of fighting over bandwidth and, you know, if three people are on a different Zoom meeting and you turn the television on, which is also internet-based, that it's, it creates some problems. So, you know, fiber to the premises is where it's at and hopefully where this community's going, it's going to be a huge reward for us. Lastly, as far as my comments, I've been getting a lot of emails from all kinds of different people about a concern as far as people staying home is really what it comes down to. The concern is that people are out shopping for, you know, furniture and bathing suits and and just a variety of things that could wait. And my 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 message tonight is you got to just make it wait. You just can't, you can't be out doing these things at this point, not because you shouldn't. It's really what you're doing at this point is you're putting other people at risk and it's it's staff of the city, you're our first responders if there's a problem, it's the hospital staff you're needlessly putting at risk, it's the nurses, the doctors, the people working on the front lines. And it's the cashiers working at, you know, at these places. So there's a lot of people on the front lines with, you know, at the grocery stores, at the, you know, the Walmarts, the Lowes, the Ocean State Joblots of the world, they're all out there doing their thing and trying to stay employed, but, you know, really hoping you're in there for the essentials and there's certain things that really just could wait or could be easily purchased online. So if you're if you're So if you're, if you're out shopping because it's fun and something to do, really got to rethink that right now. So please keep, keep these other people in mind and when we're all through this, it's time for a big, you know, debt of gratitude to these people who are kind of keeping these things operational, particularly for the essential services like food and medication, things of that nature. We, we owe them a lot, so. That's, that's what I have this evening. Okay, future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I, I sort of echo your concerns, but I just didn't know if we could bring it up in housing or I, I don't know if it'd be public safety. Had some complaints about houses operated by the shelter program, having large gatherings. So I don't know if that's on, we reached out to the shelter, these agencies that run these housing to help, have them help us manage it? Or if it's something that we have city zoning or code enforcement do?
I, I'd say, I'd say get the, right away, get, get the information over to our Director Housekill and see, Manager Buck, and maybe there's something we can quickly handle outside of waiting for a subcommittee. Does that, does that make sense?
Perfect, I'll do that, thank you.
Okay, and then if, obviously if it requires council action after that, we can certainly take it up at a subcommittee level.
Can we talk about the transfer station a little bit?
I'd say, I'd say get the, right away, get, get the information over to our, to the, to the TV.
Who's that?
Someone's got the TV blasting. I can hear myself five seconds later.
Hey, Tom, can we talk about the transfer station and the likelihood that we could at least have leaves and sticks available for people to get rid of? The two piles that below?
Yep. See, Manager Buck, do you want to talk about that real quick?
I can. The only reason that it's closed right now is we could not get the users, the residents, to be compliant with the directions that we were giving at the transfer station. They were out of, out of their vehicles into the shack. We tried to maintain social distancing. I can't go into the specifics, but we have an operator there and or two operators that have, that should not be exposed to any great extent. I have a, a responsibility to maintain a safe work environment down there. We discussed that again today and it, it really came down to the non-compliance of, of the users. They just were not following direction. We looked at alternatives of placing a forty yard dumpster up above. But that doesn't work for two different reasons. A, it's too crowded up there. B, most people bring their lawn waste, brush and stuff like that on low trailers and such and to that. It would be very difficult or ineffective for them to try and raise that up over the top of a forty yard dumpster to deposit their material in. The lower entrance to the transfer station only has one entrance in, you have to loop around. There is difficulty in preventing the public from using the other aspect of the lower transfer station and only combining that to brush. We did work on that again today. We'll continue to work on it tomorrow to see what we can come up with. For some means, I've realized extensively from email communications that came in through my office today as well as from councilors, that this is a top priority issue. We will come up with some mechanism, some way of getting that back open to the public. The biggest thing I ask for is this time for the public to assist us in keeping everybody safe by complying with the system that we set up. That's the biggest thing that I need to stress.
Hey, Steve, you know, I'm probably one of the councils most familiar with the transfer stations. I go down there quite a bit. But, you know, Parks and Rec has tons of barricades. I remember lugging them all the time. Is there any way to barricade down the length of the upper section? So that there, you basically create a train that you go in, in one, you can just go in, you have to pass every other bin. And then the person who's at the transfer station just has a sign that says, stay in car. You know, it has maybe a little handheld stop sign, so only so many people are allowed to go beyond that person to the lower section at, at any given time, kind of like Haniford's doing. You can go in when one person leaves. And just three ideas, I'll let you discuss it, but you know, I know there's enough barricades that you could prevent the upper section from being used at all.
No, understood. Excellent ideas on that. We'll, we'll see what we can do on, on that again tomorrow.
I, I just want to clarify, this is not a top priority for me anyway. I, I would say that safety is the top priority. If people have to wait to dump their brush and leaves for another month and a half, two months, so be it. So not looking for a vote or discussion, I just want to make sure that, you know, obviously our employee's safety is number one. And then if we can accommodate, great. If we can't, we can't.
Mr. Mayor, if I can offer, as I've been, as I've been communicating with our staff throughout this entire process, because it is, you know, we, you know, much of the time we talk about, you know, it's changing daily. Most days here, especially for the last two weeks, it's been changing hourly. So there's that piece. But part of my communication has been that every municipal service is vitally important to somebody at some point in time. So the, the brush and the leaves is one of those examples. You might not think that it's such a large issue, but it's an important service at this particular point in time. More people seem to be home, the, the spring weather warmed up more rapidly. It's dry right now. It's a great time to be doing this type of activity and we've shut that service off. So please bear with us, we'll find some creative solution to this and get it up and going. But this is just another example of those type of elements that we've been adapting to on a, on a daily basis.
And I might add that a lot of people live on small in-town lots and have very little place to actually put the brush. And, you know, you get little piles or you're throwing them into the woods, you're creating just fire hazards. So I understand that this isn't like the number one priority, but if something can be accomplished, I think it would ease a lot of people who are very upset about not being able to do this right now.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just wondering if, and I don't know if something that we could do is bring you back the VAC program just for this year where they can pick them up on the street like we provided that service in the past. That would reduce people going out in public because I, I, I just, I don't see it really as an essential. I, I get what you're saying is essential service to everybody, but I don't see it as, as one of the essential services that the government laid out as a reason for people to be leaving their houses. So I didn't know if it's a service that we could bring to the, the curbside.
We'll, we'll examine that as well.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, before, before you close the meeting up tonight, I wanted to ask, well, let me first give you an indication. So in, I was in a conference today with Cumberland County and York County Managers. G P Cog was, was hosting that over the large Zoom meeting platform. And, and a lot of the discussion today was who's doing what, how, how are people conducting their electronic meetings, meetings and such and to that? And I can say that we are far, far ahead of the curve, even though we continue to experience certain difficulties and such and to that, which completely blown through and burned out the Uber conference capabilities. We're on Zoom tonight. This is our first large scale on Zoom. Continue to make amendments with a great cooperation with the school department, individuals and assets, as well as city people have been working diligently behind the scenes. We got like little mice running around inside of the office complex to patch this all together to get it work. But I'm just asking general impressions for the city councilors. I had over thirty-five occupants in the, in the meeting room at one point. I think it was, it was stayed stable for us. I had a greater ability to control the sound, screen sharing worked well. It didn't have any video freezing up tonight and such and to that. So I'm just asking for a councilor comment as far as this platform, what you experienced tonight versus what we have done in the past.
Can we send it, Larissa, tomorrow? Because I, I have a couple of comments and I'd rather just send it to Larissa directly.
Okay. Just looking for that feedback so we can continue to work on it before the next meeting.
Overall, Steve, I, I think it was, it was effective. I mean, like you said, I looked at the, the participant list at one point, yeah, we were well over thirty. And, you know, so from a, from a giving a meeting or managing the meeting perspective, I, I think it was fine. I think we, we got through it and it's going to continue to get easier. Hopefully, we won't get used to this. Hopefully we'll be back in person sooner than later. But it was effective on my end. But certainly, as Council Hurley said, if you got any directive or any sort of questions or comments, let's, let's get those over to Larissa and team and we'll certainly make accommodations for the next meeting.
Mayor and city manager, this is Ian Housey. I wanted to let you know that we did stream this meeting to both town hall streams and also cable channel twenty six. There was a ten minute start of the meeting, missing gap there, but it was a continuous feed there and we have all the information necessary to do a rebroadcast.
Excellent, thank you for that, Ian. Okay, any final comments? Okay, seeing none during the meeting, thank you very much. We will see you on April twenty first, if not before. Thank you very much. Good night.